Yeah, he'll give you five bucks. Yes.
Yeah. He is super cute.
I think we're ready.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're live. All right, then, we welcome, we will call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Kaysville City Planning Commission. It is November thirteenth somehow. I don't know how we got there, but. First time in business, declaration of conflict of interest. Seeing nothing. We will move on to our next item, the swearing in and oath of office for Planning Commissioner Jeremy Burkinshaw.
All right, Charlie, this is your big moment.
Great.
So, if you want to just raise your hand, superficial, just repeat after me. I, Jeremy Burkinshaw.
I, Jeremy Burkinshaw.
Having been appointed to the Office of Kaysville City Planning Commission Member.
Having been appointed to the Office of Kaysville City Planning Commission Member.
Do solemnly swear to affirm.
Do solemnly swear to affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Utah.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge.
My duties of my office.
Of my office with fidelity.
Thank you very much. Just to make sure, yes, right here. Okay, welcome if you'd like to come have a seat up here.
Any more chairs, sir?
We're missing one.
Yeah, bring a chair.
No, there's plenty, oh, we're out of chairs.
The Y O C.
Here, right here.
Just stand, it won't be all.
They'll just put one out there, yeah.
You got it, Josh? Josh has got it. Brittany, are you Brittany, Josh? Okay.
So, this next item of business is for our conditional use permit for an instructional home occupation for Chef Tyler Cooks LLC located at 581 South, 350 East for Brittany Bringhurst. And I'm assuming Tyler's your husband. All right, nice to meet you guys. I dropped a sign off or a couple of days ago, and I met your dog Squish, delightful dog, super friendly. Big American Bulldog, so caught me off guard for a second, but everything was just fine, super friendly. So, Brittany is requesting an instructional home occupation to do an instructional cooking business from her residence. Tyler will offer customized hands-on cooking classes designed to help participants develop a range of culinary skills, from knife techniques to advanced plating. So, they will have customers come to their home where they will teach them the different culinary skills for preparing food besides sticking it in a microwave, I would assume, because that's about as good as it comes at my house. It will use primarily the kitchen in the home, and all additional equipment would be just an refrigerator and freezer in the garage where they will store additional items. They will be offering at the home classes there, and they'll also go to clients' homes and show and do personalized instruction in their own environment. They are coordinating with the Davis Health Department, and we've worked, she's spoken with the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Services, because they will be serving mocktails and cocktails. And we are clear with that, there's not any special permits required for that. They are compliant with Kaysville City Code and with the Department of Commerce. They will be allowing two to six participants for each class session, and they have plenty of room to absorb the parking on their property or directly in front of their residence and without obstructing traffic or impacting the neighborhood. So, with that being said, a sign was placed out on the property this week. There's not been any calls inquiring what's going on at the home. Usually we get at least, hey, what's going on, but it sounds like your neighbors are pretty aware of what's going on. So, staff is recommending approval of this conditional use permit for Brittany Bringhurst at 581 South, 350 East. With any conditions that the Planning Commission feel are necessary, is allowed by seventeen thirty-eight.
Thank you. All right, discussion, or do we have any questions for the applicant?
And the applicant is here.
Okay, excellent. It was pretty straightforward, I appreciate the wonderful presentation there.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the home occupation request as outlined by staff and with the findings that the staff gave us and with the editorial that I think it's an absolutely great use. Think this is ideal for our neighborhoods. I have a preschool across the street from me, and I can't tell you how much I love having those friendly parents and neighbors, and the traffic doesn't bother me a bit. So, this is a low-impact use, and I think we should approve it.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Any discussion on our motion? All right, we will start the voting.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes, thank you.
Really quick, Brittany and Tyler, I will finish approval of the business license and send you a letter tomorrow with the conditional use permit information, and you guys will be good to go as soon as that information comes across, so. And you're free to go.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes. And, or, excuse me, amend the agenda and move our minutes up to the next item, which would be number five.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, approval of the minutes from the October ninth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will then move on to previously numbered Agenda Item Number Five, Presentation and Discussion on Kaysville City Center Small Area Plan. And I believe we'll be heading down to the floor to take care of this.
So, I'm still due for a letter every day, or?
Unless we're meeting in the night.
Okay.
Yeah, if you've got a meeting, then I can.
So, door-to-door, like, two hours? I mean, like, when you take front of her?
So, for the meeting, just make sure you speak, what you can, to this little broadcasting.
Yeah, we want everyone to hear you.
So, I'll just take a brief minute and introduce our.
How to keep guessing.
With Jackson, with G S B S, I think we have fifteen more. And then, I'm sorry, Brent, with our transportation. So, we're going to go through the most recent results of the survey from the Small Area Plan, and we'll have a discussion about that, and then we'll go through the requirements that the state has for us, that we have to add in for water conservation and the general plan. Separate project, but safe and wholesome. And we'll, you know, just, if you have questions, feel free to, I will ask. These microphones are recording, so they'll be projected towards, so if you do have a question, we'll just kind of speak up, so that goes in the audience, period.
Or we can also use the microphone, so it can project through the speakers here. We can do that as well, and pass this around.
All right, hi, everybody, thank you very much for coming. I can begin to talk to us, and we're both two members of our district, and I'm using the commission council. We'll really be in the group overview, but this is a refresher, everyone's very involved in the process. This Small Area Plan is a part of the council's initiative, and through that process, it gives the city center a priority base. And also, we're talking, so it's something very visionable. And this all is coming because of the construction of this, essentially, an incredible, central, and. And project progress, so this plan will create a vision goal, including identifying, tracking, and.
Use, improve the city center, thank you, for residents and visitors, and then further Kaysville's overall community vision in the general plan. And as you can see, this was the original preferred concept, which we'll talk a little bit more about as it shifted a tiny bit, as you might remember from our last discussion. Currently, based on community feedback and what we've just kind of heard overall, areas of focus have shifted to Historic Main Street and Main Street North and Mutton Hollow. Those seem to be a little bit more of the hot areas, the ones that made sense to be the downtown area, and that was through, again, we just, through our, even just the bulk of the comments that we received, it seemed like it was really in these spots. And just to remind you, scope currently, we've done a lot of engagement, we've done our existing conditions analysis, which is on the website. We have been going through the visioning process, and that's included two surveys, which we'll talk about, and then this will all culminate into that Small Area Plan, which we'll bring forward for your review in the future. So, and just an update, we originally had had this set as a nine-month timeline, and throughout this process, it kind of has felt a little bit tight, and there's no requirement for that timeline, it just seemed like a good one at the beginning. But as we've been talking this through and kind of doing more and more of the process, the management team, we ended up coming to the conclusion we should extend the schedule, kind of give more time, especially for this last survey, to be able to allow the community to give input, and then we can really kind of focus and be really thoughtful about the final plan and recommendations. So, our last survey, which was the third survey, was from September sixteenth to November second, and then we're anticipating that we'll bring this forward to you in early twenty twenty-six, like, February. So, this is just an update to the process phases, so right now, we have just been going through all this information, putting together kind of what we thought, based on input, and some, we'll show you all of that as we go through this, and then we're just going to start drafting and hopefully get some good input here tonight. So, just kind of showing you what we've been up to. So, we've done a number of community engagement events and conversations since we've talked to you. We did an event, some tabling at Orlando's, which was fantastic in July, had a lot of good conversations there. It was a very busy night, it was on a Tuesday, and it was still insanely busy. And we did notice an increase in survey responses after that event for survey number two, which was great. We, many of you I know were at the September sixteenth open house, where we brought forward some development scenarios, the vision statement for the area, we had great attendance there, lots of different people. And then we've continued stakeholder interviews and pushed this out through the website, through those channels, as well as city social media newsletters, too. So, I'll go through both of survey two and survey three, because they kind of, survey two fed into survey three, and we'll just kind of show you what the community has said. This was more kind of guiding us, if the initial survey, survey one, was saying, okay, we need to get a temperature check on Kaysville, we need to do some ground truthing about what people think of this area and what they want to see. And then that information kind of led us into, okay, well, now we need to have a direction survey for what this could look like. And that was kind of saying, well, what kind of different types of housing, different types of commercial developments, different types of office space? What do you want to see here? And we wanted to give examples, visuals that people could react to. And we had a good number of responses, about just over three hundred. And pretty much everyone predominantly lived in Kaysville, ninety-four percent. Many have lived here a long time, most are homeowners, majority female, and just kind of a gamble of age group. And, so just to show you what we talked about, if you didn't take the survey, and again, these results as well as survey were available on the website, but for the area in general, we asked the question, what would you think is appropriate for this area at large? And then we went into the different neighborhoods. So, the top housing choices, this was our first category, were small lot, single-family homes and patio homes. That was just under seventy percent, people prioritized those as being, you know, pretty much what they see for this area and Kaysville in general. Cottage courts, fifty-three percent, and then lower support for townhomes and multi-unit housing. And just, you know, we've seen this pretty consistently throughout this process. Residents prefer low density, small-scale housing options that maintain a neighborhood feel rather than apartments or higher-density developments.
I have a question.
Yes.
What's the difference between patio homes and cottage courts, cottage courts?
So, it's actually, patio homes are kind of similar, for, in the planning realm anyway, they're pretty similar to just smaller scale, single-family homes. So, single-family could really be anything, it's really, that could be ten thousand square feet, that could be anything. And patios are much, much smaller, emphasize kind of that neighborhood feel with patio up front. Cottage courts, it's a little bit more of a cluster, so it's kind of, they could be smaller homes, cottage-style, but then they usually share open green spaces. They're just a little bit more, a little bit, I don't, I guess denser, but in reality, it's kind of just more like a smaller neighborhood feel.
But, but all single-family, detached?
Yes.
Detached.
And then we brought up some examples of commercial choices, and I will just say, a lot of this information, from the last time we talked about gentle density, i.e. not going from single-family homes to stark changes and huge developments, a lot of that, that mentality from our last meeting informed these decisions along with community engagement. And for the commercial choices, we brought up pedestrian mall, Main Street storefronts, mixed-use commercial, and that could be shops on the bottom, there's different uses on the top, and then strip commercial. And really, people emphasized in general, highest choice, Main Street storefronts. A pedestrian mall could be a good choice next, mixed-use commercial, and then the lowest support for strip commercial. So, really, the community seems to favor walkable, traditional Main Street retail over strip malls. And we did, we talked about office last time, because it seemed like that could be potential, especially in the northern area of the city center, that that could really be something, and so we thought, okay, well, there's a lot of different options here. Especially you could, there's all, there's all sorts of types down, even on the sort of Main Street and beyond, for just gauging what people thought. And so we threw out the idea of small-scale office, not huge, not a big complex, and then pedestrian-oriented office, which would be really street-facing. And the top choice there was pedestrian-oriented, and then small-scale just below that. And really, it, the general vibe of comments said that the offices should fit within walkable, mixed-use areas and complement the character of the city center. So, if that is a choice, that's how they should be developed. A big one that we've heard, especially from, yes, there's housing, yes, there's just different choices, but people really want places to be, places to go besides their homes and work. And so gathering spaces was a big one. And we offered up town square, active-play areas, plazas, pocket parks, and patio seating. And town squares and plazas can be kind of similar, but, you know, we just kind of wanted to get people's general, that reaction to what they, what they felt with these. Patio seating, so being able to have outdoor spaces for restaurants, et cetera, was big, sixty-three percent. Pocket parks and green space, fifty-four percent, town squares, fifty-three, and then we also had a good reaction for active-play areas as well. So, and it really just seems like the public really wants these types of places, these third places to go to, where they can interact and have engagement with their fellow community members. And so just some consistent priorities across all three areas. So, Main Street storefronts and pedestrian malls, that was the highest, it really seemed like people reacted well to those. Town squares and pocket parks consistently valued, even in the comments, that kind of thing was brought up. Again, just that engagement was important. And just that strip mall, or strip commercial and high-density housing, that was, that, people were pretty versed to that. And then just when we asked the question of what types of uses truly capture the spirit of Kaysville, the biggest reaction was local shops and restaurants, family activities, and community events. So, really, it's just envisioning a vibrant, small-town Main Street experience, walkable, attractive, and community-centered rather than commercial sprawl. And we did a specific question for each area, and just kind of threw out all of the different uses in there, we wanted, and we asked people to rank them, and to say, what's most important for you to see here? And really, the big ones, it was the character for Historic Main Street, again, walkable, small-town feel. For commercial, it was those Main Street storefronts, keeping it smaller scale, cafes, local shops, those came out in the comments. For housing, it was those cottage courts, small lot homes. And again, public realm is important, so patio seating, pocket parks, and having some sort of town square for interaction, and then just preserving that charm while adding some small-scale commercial, that was prioritized. And then the Main Street North area, this character was a little, it seemed like there was a lot more openness to having mixed-use in this area. It was a little bit more of a blank canvas, there's a little bit more parking, strip malls, different things, and having a family focus. And the commercial aspect was, were much more open to mixed-use retail, it makes use commercial in general and dining. And for housing, again, it was just kind of small lots, there were, there was a little bit more openness to townhomes, and it seemed like it might be more, for people's perspective, more inappropriate in this area than maybe down at Historic Main Street. And then play areas, pocket parks, outdoor seating, and then the goal of it was really to, it seemed through the comments that people wanted to extend even that Historic Main Street vitality up north and have more community gathering spaces. Now, for Mutton Hollow, as we go up north, this one was a little different, especially because we've heard a couple of different words thrown out in some prior engagements, and that was kind of the, we added a couple more options here, which we noted in the survey, too, was that this potentially could be an area for an office park, it could potentially be an area for experiential retail, i.e. a garden or village-type experience, and maybe some mixed-use in there as well. So, that's why those are a little bit different, but people did have a really strong reaction to experiential retail, and seemed like that was something that they would like to see happen in this area. Office park, not so much, it seemed like that was not really something that people were leaning towards. But this seemed like an opportunity, a little bit more of a blank canvas for a neighborhood-scale destination, where people actually want to come and be and hang out.
Quick question?
Yes.
Can you just give us a picture of what, like, experiential retail would look like? I mean, I know people who took the survey probably got pictures of things with it, but I'm having a hard time picturing it right now.
Yes, do you, have you been to Garden Village?
Yep.
Okay, so it's kind of like the idea of kind of open space, there could be some landscaping, pathways, greenery, shops, restaurants, different things like that, not necessarily the same as an open-air mall like the Gateway or some creep type of thing, not necessarily the same. It almost has a little bit more of a village feel, a little bit more neighborhood feel. And there's, you know, even with that, again, not necessarily like a mall, it's a little bit more, could be a little bit more, less thematic like a mall, it could be more, again, feeling a little bit more organic in the.
Thank you.
No problem. And so, just with that, again, that really stood out, that was, that seemed like a big, a really good reaction for most people. In this area, it kind of seemed like the same, small lot homes, cottage courts, and kind of limited townhomes. Just in general, the density factor is a little bit, people are wary of that. But green and play spaces and patios was something, and even in comments, people talked about connectivity and that there was opportunity there as well. So, and along in this survey, we needed a little bit more feedback, we felt, about a vision statement. So, for survey two, at this point, we often would say, okay, here's a vision statement, but we really thought it was appropriate to say, let's throw out a couple more words and also give people some chance for us to get some more feedback. And so, in order for us to craft a vision statement, which we did for survey three, we just asked, okay, give us some words, give us some ideas of what you want to know, of what you want to see in the vision statement for, that's going to guide the city center. And what people, the big ones that came out were walkability, restaurants and local shops, family-oriented and community spaces, small-town charm and safety, and then, again, it was really emphasized with the walkable streets, unique local businesses. Local businesses was definitely emphasized, unless of an emphasis on chains. Safe and family-friendly areas, so just want a place where all, all residents can come and enjoy. And then, again, just keeping that charm. There was definite caution against over-commercialization or high-density housing. Again, that comes out often in most of, in a number of comments. And, and I did, it was interesting, just that, it was also talking about balance. This is, it's a big deal for this area, so there's a lot of housing that surrounds this, a lot of other types, parks and different types of uses, but inherent, it was just a lot of, please be careful about moving forward and opening up. So, for survey number two, we got a pretty good handle on what folks were open to. And at that point, we said, okay, well, let's do an internal design charrette, so we brought together, we put just maps on the table, and we showed the survey results, and what people were open to, and we just put our heads together. And it was us, a number of folks from G S B S, we had our urban designer, placemaking team, historic preservation architect, because that has been a big theme that's arisen from this process, economic and market analysis partners, and Kim Lee Horn Transportation Connectivity Partners, as well as Kaysville City Staff and Leadership, and we just put our heads together, we thought, well, let's put together a draft vision statement that people can react to, and let's, based on the feedback prior, let's look at the different opportunities that people have alluded to or called out. So, that led to survey number three. It got a bit more specific, and if you came to our open house, it was the same information. It was virtually just those boards that we had, the different development scenarios, as well as the vision statement. And this was kind of, this is really going to guide us in our next step, to be able to put the plan together, to put goals together, to put recommendations for how you make these things happen, moving forward. We did have less response on this one, and I get that people get survey fatigue, so we did break a hundred, but hoping for more, but, you know, got some good responses for sure. Very similar profile as well. Predominantly all residents and people that have lived here a long time, homeowners, mostly female. Age group varies from thirty-five to sixty-four, and typically over one hundred thousand annually for their household income. So, this one, it seemed like there were some, there were very good comments, a number of comments that were very positive, especially with how they hope this, how this area moves forward, excited for what it could be. Definitely cautious, that came out a number of times. So, the residents even noted that they definitely appreciate this happening, but fear, again, over-development, traffic, and parking shortages. And so, big concerns were, please, please, help us preserve a small-town identity, overcrowding and high-density housing, again, came out multiple times, and protecting historic buildings and green space, those comments came out a lot, too, especially because we had some specific scenarios where that came into play. And so, again, same takeaways we've seen before, Kaysville's character, please maintain it, and then walkability, with, while adding thoughtful updates that include everyone and allow people to take part in the community. So, what we put out to the, to the community, and it had a really, generally very positive reaction. So, we did a sliding scale, one to five, what do you think, five being the highest? And we had a four-point-oh-two average reaction for this vision statement here, and I'll just read it aloud. So, Kaysville City Center, from Historic Main Street to Mutton Hollow, will be a welcoming destination, not just a place to pass through. Building on the community's historic character and hometown spirit, the city center will offer vibrant shops, dining, and gathering spaces that create a true sense of arrival and belonging. It will serve as the heart of the community, supporting families, local businesses, and connections, while ensuring safety, accessibility, and lasting vitality for generations to come. And there were a couple of comments, for the most part, I think people, it seemed like there was support. There were a couple of comments that I thought was valid to call out, where people did specifically say, I want to call it out, a need for parking and affordability, calls to protect historic homes and small-town feel, and a desire for green space and family gatherings. And what we kind of came to the conclusion on, we brought this forward to the management team, and we said, those, that's fantastic, we love that. We think that it is covered in the vision statement, but we can get more specific in the subsequent goals that come after the vision statement, where we can actually call out those different elements. So, this might look very familiar. When we did our open house and then in the survey, we had, we put together a few different scenarios for the opportunity areas that we came up with and what the community told us about. And you'll recognize this one, this is here, this is essentially just to the north, there's the old historic library, the former site. And with people calling out the want for a gathering space, town square, tight plaza space, somewhere that can be activated, it seemed like this could be a really good area, and there's some opportunity in all sorts of ways. We kind of just envisioned, okay, this could be food trucks, this could be movable seating, it could be landscaping, it could be a place where you could even do small concerts, things like that. In this scenario, there's, there's that big overarching question of this whole thing, what to do with the library? And so, and we said, okay, well, let's put it out to the community, where we say, this is what it could look like, and this is including the library. There still would be access to Main Street North and South, potentially even through. and this is including the library, there still would be access to Main Street, North and South, potentially even through", and just see what people thought. And in general, at the open house and in this survey as well, the comments were absolutely divided. And so, I just wanted to call out a couple of them, because interestingly, even one of the comments said, "I'd like obtaining the old library building if it is actually available." And that is one of, those are the biggest comments that come for Scenario Two, which is removing the library, is that folks are saying they don't necessarily want to spend the money to renovate it and restore it. And so, but people did say, "I would love to see the historic library remain and be used as a community micro-school or educational purposes, the library remaining works if it is turned into business or community space, something welcoming to the public." And then, Scenario Two was just, what would it look like if the library was taken down? And if it was just overall community space? And people reacted to this one, we actually did get more of a vote for this option, slightly, but more. And people did say, "It was the general idea not to spend the money on renovating it. Please do not spend tax dollars to renovate the old library, the cost simply cannot be rationalized, and I would love to keep pieces of the library as a monument, actually, you should auction off pieces of it and sell time and spaces for residents to come and help demolish it." And then, they said, "I love this", but it was a long comment that said, "People love rage rooms, this could be that type of a thing." So, I loved that, I was like, "Oh, yeah." But there were people in the open house that also said, "If we don't keep it, we should create a monument to it of the materials of this library." That was a nice comment too, many comments. So, you'll see one on the left, that's Scenario One. Middle is neutral, people said they don't really, one way or the other, it's fine. And then, the right Scenario Two, getting rid of the library. Again, just slightly over that. And so, even though these are the numbers in the comments, it still very much did seem that opinions are split. So, that would be something to think about moving forward.
Liz?
Yes?
So, you may be addressing this later, but what happens to the parking?
So, that's, that was past, you know, in this music, in this development scenario, we thought of, okay, we wanted to gauge the interest, and you'll see it in here, ooh, come back. We had a comment, I hope I can, right here, you see my mouse? Right there. And it was basically saying that if this site can be reimagined, and if there's some, there's extra parking over on the eastern side of it, if it can be reimagined, and maybe a parking structure, that is a possibility too. And then, there could still be parking in this area and still have public space. And we were just saying, "Well, this is a good opportunity, let's bring it up, our people will open to a parking structure, because sometimes, that can be tricky." And for the most part, we said, "Yeah, yeah, we totally have a parking structure there." So, that was an interesting surprise, you never know with a little book.
All we need is the money.
Exactly. Okay, come on, sorry. Okay. And then, another opportunity area, which this may look familiar, but is the Science Bank site, just right to the south. And so, that one was, this, there is Science Bank, there's a little bit of growth that's going to be occurring there, with employees coming in and a new company, and, but it is a very big lot, and there's a lot of parking, unused parking. And so, that's opportunity zone two, even people called that out, saying this could be something. So we thought, "Okay, this is, these are potential options within this site, what do you think?" And we put here, Main Street scale, commercial uses, and then, there would still be parking in the back and between these different Zion's, this, and then, potential for homes right along the east side of that property. And then, a park space to the south, with the building, the home that was just demolished, which the Design Department owns, but that could potentially be a green space. And people actually reacted very well to the green space, and folks, even some adjacent homeowners said, "I love that, I would love to have a park there", and someone brought up that this was kind of the gateway to Historic Main Street, and having green space would be really great. There was positive reaction in general to the commercial storefronts, especially keeping it Main Street scale, but still maintaining parking. The one thing was the housing, and that was definitely a strong reaction of, "I don't want to see housing right here." Folks did say that maybe there was an opportunity to connect this green space up to the City Hall area and where the old library was, but that was definitely something that was called out, because they said, "No, I don't want to see housing here." And I will just say, for these scenarios, and you may all very welcome, you may all may know this, but it did come up a number of times where people did say, "Well, how can you come and tell people what to do on these properties?" And we said, "That is actually not what this exercise is about." You know, there is zoning in this area, and property owners, they all have their rights, and they have zoning and development by right. This is purely vision. So someday, in the future, this could even be 20 years, when this property changes or changes hands, and someone wants to come in and develop it, this guiding document would say, "Well, this is what Kaseville wants to see. So how does your development fit in with that?" Again, it wouldn't be, "We're coming in, and you have to change your property" kind of a thing, just visionary. But, again, there were parking and traffic concerns in a big way in this one, and if, for the, for the actual scenario, we do have to definitely come up with the, you know, "There is no parking here, this is the use, and da-da-da", so that has to be thought through. And there was the strong resistance to housing, like I said, but again, people said they did like the idea of the businesses, but specifically, opportunity for local businesses and the green space as well. And then, you may, you may recognize this one, this is Main Street North. And this exercise was really to just depict what potential, again, that idea of gentle density, because it was said in this area, maybe we could do mixed-use commercial, it seems like it could make sense here, and maybe we just slightly go from Main Street scale, just a little bit more, maybe it could be one to two stories. And in this one, this kind of just shows, Bowman's is kind of over to the east, you'll notice up in the top left corner, that's the Bishop Storehouse and the field. People had a more positive reaction to this one, but there were definite concerns. And so, one of them, what people liked, was they really liked the bike and pedestrian improvements, trees, small shops, and walkability, just kind of the presence of this area. But we actually did get a pretty strong comment reaction to any type of building on the Bishop's Field, because it's beloved, and fear of overcrowding and traffic here. And for us, the Bishop's Field, that's an easy fix, this was just to depict potential development, that can be removed, we don't, that doesn't have to be on that property, but, all good comments. And so, again, support for walkable improvements and protecting green space, and the community is more open to commercial and different types of housing in this area. So, Mutton Hollow, this is, Mutton Hollow is bigger than this property, but you'll recognize this, this is the big green field that's up north. Mutton Hollow itself, there's a lot of opportunity, it's current a lot of industrial and storage. This site specifically just came up because it is, although it is used currently now for agriculture, it could be something in the future, something else. And so, we thought, "All right, well, let's throw out, we don't know what, but let's throw out some different, different types of scenarios that show different types of land uses." And that went from just basically allowing single-family, just homes, and people's reaction to that, up to a mix of different types of uses. And what was helpful in this exercise was that we said the benefits and trade-offs of these different ones, we had scenarios once before, which I'll go through. But the benefits of this one, just single-family homes, matches the community preference for this type of development. It's a predictable form that fits well with nearby neighborhoods, and it's easier to plan utilities and streets since demand is a bit more uniform. But we wanted to make sure to tell people the trade-offs, yes?
Can you, what's the acreage of this Mutton Hollow area?
It's...
22.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's about 22 total.
22 acres?
Yeah.
It's a good amount of space. So, trade-offs, very little housing diversity, especially because the city center, it's a space that that could actually occur. It may leave out renters, seniors, and small-family households, less walkable and more car-focused, with fewer daily activities nearby, and it is weaker support for the city center's economic vitality. So fewer homes to sustain retail and dining, and then, different, fewer options for those types of things in this area. And then, of course, limited public or civic spaces to help build community identity and support gathering.
Liz, was, was there any kind of discussion about commercial development at all in this area?
Oh, yes, in the different scenarios.
Okay, okay.
And so, for Scenario Two, and we, again, we just blocked it out, so people could actually see the percentages of what these land uses could be. This one included, that yellow block is 45%, small lot, single-family home, and then, the green is green space, that would be maybe some open space that folks could use. And then, we had more of the different types of housing, maybe like duplex, triplex, that type, up in the corner where it's orange. So just a mix of housing, and then a mix of shared space. And the benefits of this one, again, single-family home support, that was big in the community, and then, other housing options, so a little bit of that, so that could be sprinkled in, different for different people, there are different phases of life in the community. 10% of the area is set aside for parks, trails, and play spaces, matching community preference, so that seemed like something that people wanted. And then includes more attainable housing types to help with affordability challenges. Trade-offs, duplex and triplex housing has mixed communities support. Still, this thing is, this area would be mostly residential with limited commercial activity to keep the city center lively, and some parcels may require upgrades to water and sewer systems. Scenario Three, we get a little bit, a little bit more diverse here. And, and we have in the red, mixed commercial and retail, and the green is open space and park. And then, the brown in the bottom would be multifamily. So, the benefits of this, strong match to the city's vision, a lively mixed-use area with cultural and civic spaces, again, civic kind of more of the open space meaning. More multifamily housing helps with affordability and provides housing choices. Strong commercial mix boosts tax revenue and helps the area, keep the area active well into the evening, so it doesn't just, you know, shut off at 9:05. New plazas and open spaces reflect survey feedback for gathering places and community events. But the trade-offs, multifamily housing has lower support in past surveys, requires significant infrastructure upgrades, i.e. utilities, heavier traffic and more parking demand expected, and more complex to design and phase in. So, higher risk, retail doesn't succeed. And then, four, that has even more mix in there. And that has mixed commercial, retail, in the red, duplex, triplex, in the orange, small lot, single-family home in yellow, green space, and it can be moved around, but that's mixed in there too, as well as multifamily. And so, the benefits here, it's the most balanced, diversified scenario that meets many housing needs and matches overall city center goals. Walkable, potential for connectivity with trails, mixed-use neighborhoods, makes it easy to shop, dine, and support local businesses. And with some of the area set aside for plazas, parks, and community spaces, that is reflecting survey feedback. Lower development risk than Scenario Three, because it spreads land use demand across multiple markets. And then, the trade-offs, so includes a larger amount of multifamily housing, which again, there's, there's good adversity to that. And then, more complex to put in place, requires careful planning for zoning, timing, and infrastructure. And then, may not generate as much retail activity as a more business-heavy strategy, and then, some tension possible between quieter residential areas and busier commercial spaces nearby. So, this was our board, oh.
Yes, can I just clarify something, would you?
Although Liz talks about multifamily, or duplexes and triplexes, and single-family, all of those scenarios have the same number of dwelling units. It's just that we allocated them, or made them, grouped them in a different format. So, so the same number of dwelling units that the single-family, that was the baseline, once we figured that out. Then, we said, "Okay, if we, if we put them in, some of them in duplexes or triplexes, how much space does that get us to do some open space? If we do them in multifamily, what other uses can we fit there?" I just wanted to clarify that what she talks about, the different housing, it's that, it's the same number of dwelling units, just in a different format.
Thank you for sharing. This was our open house board for these scenarios. We didn't have many comments really on the boards themselves, but this, the top right option from the survey, and even from our conversations, were people liked option one, the small lot, single-family. And then, that was the most preferred. Then, Option Two, the one that had the 45% small and single-family, 45% townhome, 10% park, that was the second most preferred. And there was opposition to multifamily, high-density development. And again, it's a very similar takeaway to before, favor low-density housing with integrated green space, reflecting the surveys' themes. I will say, at the open house, there was, in, in the beginning, immediately, people said, "We just want single-family homes", but experiential retail still came up, so having that option in this area, we got really excited about that. Green space and connectivity, people got really excited about that too. And so, that, as, as well as even a few folks that said, "Well, let's just preserve this agricultural land", that came up as well. So, although the survey said, "Yes, single-family dwelling", it did seem like the sentiment, even in some comments, is that those elements were still things that people wanted up for consideration too. And that, I'll let Brent step in and chat a little bit about what we talked about with the transportation and parking and connectivity aspects.
Thank you very much. So, we have basically two scenarios for the transportation mobility. One is focusing on a walking and bicycle infrastructure and network. Grew, I'll go through some of that first, some of the things we've heard, protected continuous bike lanes, and one of the things was moving that to 100 East off of Main Street, so it's away from the busy traffic, but capitalizing on a lower-volume street to provide that enhanced environment for bicycles. Addressing some of the east-west connectivity with some pedestrian crossings over I-15. Where am I on there?
On the left.
It's on the left.
Or left.
Up, more tip-top. Left-hand. Oh, right, there we go. Orient myself upside down on that map there, so. Others are improving the sidewalk surface, aging sidewalks, aging infrastructure gaps, things like that, making sure that that's continuous and materials are in good condition. Another one is supporting a new trail along Holmes Creek, much like the Kays Creek Trail. Recognize that is difficult from a right-of-way, there is not currently a corridor for there, but that would take many years to develop and try and figure out how to implement there, but support for a concept like that. And then, other amenities, bicycle parking, scooter areas, et cetera. And if we go to the next scenario, focus is more on the pedestrian safety and access. The first one, again, more of that filling in the sidewalk gaps where we have those. Now, the second, providing safe, visible crossings. You'll notice a lot of people park on the, on the other side of Main Street, this side of Main Street, less utilized, it's because they don't feel safe parking on this side of Main Street, and then, crossing to the other side of Main Street to access the businesses. So, some new enhanced, protected pedestrian crossings to, to both make it easier to get to the other side of Main Street, but better utilize the parking. We heard about intersectional safety, signal timing, improving pedestrian visibility, and that could be done through a variety of ways, enhance ADA access, Americans with disabilities, routes for those with seniors, and then, reducing traffic and parking conflicts, again, at those crossroads.
Okay, so that's a lot of information. Again, Survey Two and Three, they're on the website, so that is actually, they will just be published for you. Honestly, our questions, give them the feedback, what are your thoughts? We can go back to other slides, answer any questions, or even just, you know, what you thought, even what you heard from your interactions with the community and the open houses. And is there anything you feel is important that was a touchstone?
Yeah, I have a question, sorry, new guy, new guy question. Help me understand your scope. Did you also, is this purely visionary, or did you guys also include feasibility and even underwriting into some of these plans, specifically the commercial and the retail?
Yes, visionary. So this would be, it's essentially putting together, we gather the community feedback, and we basically put that together in one big document, and this is what people have said, this is what seems appropriate, this is the general plan, da-da-da-da-da, we put that all together. We do put together recommendations, timeline, you know, what's short-term, mid-term, long-term type of a thing. And actually, we do some implementation recommendations, but we don't get into the nitty-gritty about costs or anything like that. That's what I mean by this.
Yeah, or just viability of what we're recommending. You know, some of this commercial and retail, how it's, how it's oriented could be challenging.
Can I, we actually do have a market analysis, that we had a market analysis sub-con consultant who came in and did the overall market depth analysis.
Will that be shared with us?
Yeah, it's part of the plan, it'll be part of the plan.
It's on the website, so our existing conditions analysis, it's a part of that, it's a nice, big, hefty document, it's like one of the first ones on the left-hand side, and you just download the documents in there.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, why not? Might as well throw us. So, I know it's tough to talk about parking for, when we're trying to talk more about walkability and pedestrian friendliness and all of that, but to get people here and to be here, parking needs to be thought about and addressed. The idea, you mentioned it on the earlier, about perhaps a parking structure here on this, on the east side of Main, which is a, you know, not a bad idea, the challenge, of course, is the financing of it, but, but it's, as a concept, it's a good idea. But I, I know that the businesses on the west side, for them, you know, they, I think they feel like the challenge is getting people across the street. And I wonder about the, the idea, if we do a parking structure over here or something like that, shifting everything on Main Street, having no parking on the east side of Main Street and have, bringing angle parking back on the west side of Main Street.
We tried, I thought UDOT said no.
Yeah, so we, we put together a concept and, and I don't think UDOT has, has said officially that, never in a million, billion years.
Bad, no surprise, no surprise, but.
They, they didn't like the
They didn't like it.
... interaction of vehicles backing onto a higher-speed road.
Yeah, so they're, so slow down the speed.
Yeah, reduce the speed.
Yeah, and then, one of the, the cool case studies that, that I like to talk about is Provence Center Street.
Yeah.
With, with the lower speed limit.
Yep.
Uh, and UDOT has identified that as a major concern of theirs with the, uh, traffic volume, what would lowering the speed limit, I'm, I'm not advocating against, uh, whatsoever, but, um, they talked about, you know, the, the purpose of, uh, SR-273, uh, what, what does lowering the speed limit do to, uh, the intent of that as a minor arterial, uh, they also talked about.
But see, media gets back to the whole issue of, what are our main streets for? Are they to move traffic or are they to be a focal point for the community?
Right. And, and I think you have to try and strike a balance there.
Yeah, I agree.
We, we like the, internally, we like the angled parking idea, uh, but, but UDOT does have valid points, I, I would still love to see something like that. And, you know, are there potential drawbacks, you know, are, are people disincentivized from using Main Street, uh, because of the lowered speed limit? Do they try to find alternative routes
Sure.
... through residential areas? I think they're good questions to keep in mind, uh, but I, I do appreciate UDOT sharing the feedback in a way that wasn't a, like, death nail against it, so.
I love that instead of a raised median, wouldn't that be better?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I think we had looked at both, uh, the, the concept that we drew up internally was, uh, a, a small raised median, shifting the road to the east somewhat, uh, providing some patio space in front of the shops on the west side and angle parking.
The, the notion of parking, um, is a major component of the Holiday Village, um, that I, I worked on for many years and we used right-of-way and, you know, you don't need a ton of extra right-of-way, um, to get angled parking, which really increases the number of stalls you can get. And once you get rid of all parallel parking moves, it really doesn't impact, uh, traffic movement that much. If you go to where the, if you've been to the Holiday Village area, that little square, the city put about a hundred on-street parking stalls, cause people were saying, you know, we love this idea, but where are we gonna park? So the city said, look, we're gonna reduce parking in, in a village of a small quaint town center. Too much parking kills everything. It's, it is the nuclear option, if you wanna kill the quaintness of a small downtown like this one, overpark it. You have to find the Goldilocks number and one way you can do that is reduce on-street, off-street parking, reduce the off-street that a business can have. You cap it and then the city or UDOT, working with another agency, can pick up small strips to increase the depth of those angled stalls and it's, it's magical. The city put a hundred stalls on-street and we would go out there month after month and take pictures of empty stalls. We vastly, I believe that, as human beings, we vastly overestimate the need for parking. Again and again, we'd say, watch this work, watch this work. And if you go down there right now, even with stuff going on, there are tons of stalls that sit empty because they're simply fifty feet or a hundred feet farther than people wanna walk. So the city went to great expense and effort to provide those stalls and they're not being used. Only the very prime ones right in front of the plaza are the ones that everybody circles and wants to get, but it's amazing what the angled stalls will do. So, I guess what I'm saying is, I think we should not overemphasize parking. It, it, it can be a deadly thing to, to overpark. Early on in this process, um, I know there was some parameters set, where, where, I'm excused by ignorance, but I'm, I missed it. Where did we land on, um, light studies, eminent domain, tax increment? What, what, where, where does that stand? Is that still on the table? Have we, have we?
The CRA. So this is, this is just a long-range planning, uh, tool that we'll end up with, similar to the general plan. The, I think what you're speaking about is the community reinvestment area that the city proposed, um, that's still on pause. The council gave us direction earliest, earlier this year to make some amendments to the boundary. They're completely separate, um, separate items and we're still kinda sorting through some of that other stuff.
Well, I saw some overlap.
Well, yes, there, there is overlap because of the areas that are being considered, but that's really kind of the only overlap that exists. Um, so when we were working on that CRA, um, there, there was a lot of overlap between the boundaries of what the small area plan is looking at and then what the CRA would have, would encompass. So, it, it's, I think, easy to get confused, but they are completely separate and the...
I was confused, thank you.
Yeah, well, and the, you're not the only one, so, um, the CRA is still essentially on hold, um, we're just trying to figure out kind of timing on when to bring that back. There's, and part of that honestly is just kind of, um, bandwidth of staff, um, this has been a, a large project, even though we have a consultant involved, um, there's just kind of only so much that, the, the two of us or three of us can, can do. So, um, we will probably be bringing that back, um, at some point next year.
I have a question, it's maybe a little bit random, but how do we, what do you estimate the change would be with the Shepherd Lane on-ramp and off-ramp, two traffic patterns on Main Street? Do we have any guesses about?
So Josh can probably best answer that.
Yeah, the, the most recent meeting that we had with UDOT, they don't anticipate, uh, significant impact, uh, in terms of reduction, uh, with that project being implemented later this year.
Unless we slow down the traffic on Main Street.
There you go.
And then it will...
Yeah, and I think, I think some of that is, uh, is that relief has already been felt with the West Davis Corridor opening up. It was, was it a year ago in January? It's been open, I think it was January this year that it opened up. And so there has been some relief felt from that, um, and again, not a whole lot. And then with the, um, you know, what they did up on eighty-nine, that relief has already also been kind of, I think, consumed in the area as well.
Mike? Yeah, just a couple of thoughts, um, when it showed, the slide that showed the parking area out here, kind of converting that to kind of quasi-park area with food trucks doing a, a multi-level parking structure, just right off the bat, we, we've had a proposal in the past where someone wanted to develop, put some higher-density housing in a, a parking structure here and as a council, we overwhelmingly were against that. And I just don't know if that fits within the character of our community, cause even though we are growing and it is busy, we still are a small town essentially. And I'm worried about taking away any parking out here, um, because we already do have, we don't have enough parking and I understand this lot's mostly empty, but I think if we could put our focus into trying to get people to park here, to use the businesses across the street, that would be the best scenario. And having a wide crosswalk, like halfway down Main Street in front of the old library here and then making it so the, um, if people in wheelchairs or elderly people have more time to cross the street. And so I think our focus should really be on this street and getting people to, to cross versus something like this. And, um, if we're able to save the old library, I would like to see the old library used for something like this, a community gathering space, but also the landscape around the library, especially in front of it. Maybe that could be re-landscape to encourage people to spend time and then bring food trucks, if we wanna do that, into the parking lot, but I would hate to lose any parking here. I just don't think that's the best, um, use of our focus, uh, when we talk about revitalizing downtown Main Street. So just a couple of thoughts on that.
Nathan, I think, you know, um, the best thing for the businesses on the west side of Main Street would be to get more people here, obviously. Um, and one good way to do that is to have a space like what's shown in these alternatives, which is a place where we can have all kinds of community events and celebrations. You know, we can do the Fourth of July thing there, we could do a Christmas tree lighting thing again, do other things like that, have things during the year, gets people down here and then if we have that mid-block crosswalk and they just cross the street and go to the businesses over across the street, how many of them would go over to the Kaysville Creamery to get an ice cream cone while they're here doing something on, on the plaza? The plaza and then the programming of the plaza would be a way to get people down here and get more people on the Main Street.
I agree.
Along with that idea, uh, you don't have to have a big space to really make it exciting. Uh, so, we'll go back to Holiday that I worked on for a number of years. The plaza out in front of the buildings is actually, is pretty small, but there are raised planter boxes and then there is a ton of events that are held there. There's some, uh, art that's been installed, there was a stage there, they used to have concerts where they do the Christmas tree lighting, but one of the best things you can do is simply throw out a bunch of really sturdy, heavy chairs and tables, not organized, just kind of random, where people can sit and just having your street activated by having people outside on, in that little area, whether, and space heaters in the wintertime. It's amazing, it's not that complicated, people tend to overthink it, but the real key is to just have people visible and then have just, you know, fifteen or twenty stalls that people can nose in and out real quickly and then really good parking within a hundred yards. Good, like what you've done out here, uh, outside the building here with these stalls are great, I mean, they'd be even better if they were angled, because if you have something just right over here, a couple hundred feet away, if you double the amount of parking stalls, well, that's an easy walk even for somebody older. But, um, have, have any of you been to the food truck park in Holiday? Really the first food truck park in Utah and it has, um, electrical hookups, no gas because they're loud and so it's a quiet food truck park. So we would go to that food truck park, which is one of a kind, is a partnership with the city. There are six berths, small sitting area and a little grassy area and there would be several, I've got pictures of several hundred people there on a tiny little parcel. And we would go there, kind of incognito and we would ask residents, we'd say, hey, where do you live? And some of them said, oh, they were half-mile. They would walk within a half-mile, they'd get their families, strollers, and they would walk all the way to the food truck park and then they would sit there and people are talking, neighbors, hey, where are you from? It, it's so cool to watch people just sit and talk with each other and socialize in a fairly quiet atmosphere on a super busy street. Holiday Boulevard is super busy right there, but they slow the traffic down, you do traffic calming devices and provide parking within a short distance, it's amazing. Another thing you can do is you can come up with, um, merchant parking associations. So, we were working with the merchants to agree with each other that after hours, like the office building, after hours, the parking lot's set empty. So the food truck park goes to talk with the, uh, office owner and the office owner says, yeah, a dollar a month per stall and you can park all you want from five o'clock on. And then we, on the north end of the village, we had a medical office building, closed at five, they had forty or fifty stalls within about four, five hundred feet of the plaza. City worked out a deal with them and the, and the guy said, you can use any of my parking stalls all weekend at any night after five o'clock. So these informal relationships the city can help foster really can negate the need for expensive parking, things like a parking structure, which I think would be disastrous.
So, question on that, we have a business over here and they don't like anyone to park in their parking lot, if they're not doing business there. And so, in your experience, like, what would a city typically do? Is there monetary, exchange?
Yeah, um, there are, there are a couple of options. One, the city can go and wine and dine and say, hey, work with us on this, because what benefits, the area benefits you. In fact, if you put a sign up that says, village parking after five PM on weeknights, man, it's great, it generates goodwill. So a lot of it is just trying to talk to a property owner to say, look, you could, the city will sign an agreement with you or you can have a liability agreement. A lot of it is just, again, those partnerships, like the food truck guy, he worked for two years, for a year to get the office guy right next door, literally across a grassy berm, sixty stall just sitting there, empty, empty, and it was not helping the food truck park. Well, because at Holiday, everybody knows everybody and so there, these guys go way back with each other and, you know, but the city kind of came and then acted as intermediary to say, hey, do you like the village? Yeah, do you like the village? Well, if you both like it, try thinking about the community. So it took some work, but yeah, the city can throw some incentives in there, the city can work on a tax break, the city can say, hey, we'll waive your business license fees for three years. There's lots of little things, you need a building permit, we'll waive that. Just work with these guys. So one thing I didn't get to before I retired was organizing a merchant, a downtown parking association, cause it's one of the most effective things you can do. It builds goodwill, little simple signs, and then you could do these really cute directional signs on corners. Like Holiday Village is probably twenty, twenty-five acres, the whole area, it's really compact. But you do these wayfinding signs that are really cute, that say shoes this way or food truck parked that way. You get tons of people on the weekends out there walking and it's fun and people rave about it, but it's, you just have, have the right
Yeah.
... thing with the signs and those kinds of things. A lot of it is just goodwill and the city throwing effort at it. A lot of it's just getting people to talk to each other, so.
So I think, um, kind of like was brought up earlier, this is very kind of a visioning-type plan, um, and a lot of the stuff, maybe twenty years down the line, especially the bigger things. So what I've liked coming out of this meeting is that there seemed to be a lot of options for, you know, small improvements that we could do here and there that can, you know, kind of slowly build up and help us build that base that we're looking for to support local businesses and maybe bring in additional local businesses. Um, and so I guess my question is, do we, with, with this plan we'll be receiving, is it possible to get like small steps, kind of like Paul has talked about and Wilf and, and Nate, just like, hey, you know, these are little things you could do, like maybe take this part of the parking lot and do food trucks once a month or, or is that gonna be part of the plan?
Yes, yep, we do a slight scale recommendation. So there's some that are short-term, easily implementable, quote-unquote, easily implementable and, and just thinking about, this can be done pretty complete and it can be a big help up to, this means, this would have to take some real planning and it could be done in the future. So we have this like a scale recommendation.
Okay, cool, yeah, I like that, because I really do feel like, from a practical standpoint, that's where we're gonna make the most headway any time in the near future.
Paul mentioned a parking management association or a district, something along those lines. When I was at Salt Lake City, we were looking at those, to do those in, in, not so much downtown, because downtown was its own environment, but in other areas of the city, particularly like in areas around Fifteenth and Fifteenth and some of the things like that. Um, it's really a good idea, it's, it's, like, you have to have everybody's cooperation, everybody needs to agree to be part of it, but if you can get that, it can be really powerful, because then they can share parking and do a lot of things that really would benefit all of them. So it's, it's a great idea.
And a lot of it has to do with that diurnal change. A retail...
Paul mentioned a parking management association or a district, something along those lines. When I was in Salt Lake City, we were looking at those, to do those in, in, not so much downtown, because downtown was its own environment. But in other areas of the city, particularly like in areas around Fifteenth and Fifteenth and some of the things like that. Um, it's really a good idea, it's, it's, like, you have to have everybody's cooperation, everybody needs to agree to be part of it. But if you can get that, it can be really powerful. Because then they can share parking and do a lot of things that really would benefit all of them. So it's, it's a great idea.
A lot of it has to do with that diurnal change. A retail, you know, retail is all day, night, evening, but the offices, they're empty. Hotels are often really, really cool with retail because hotels are empty when? From about ten in the morning, they're empty until about seven or eight at night. And so if you look for those opportunities about when people park and what use it is they're parking for, I can offer two things. One, Holiday had an old downtown, a dilapidated downtown, they worked really hard on for years and now it's fantastic. But we did a parking study. We found that there were a thousand parking stalls in a twenty, thirty acre area. A thousand asphalted parking stalls. And what you had was a really disjointed downtown area, dilapidated. Partners and the, you know, the video verns, places that people loved, but were garbage. And what they've got there now is something that's really cool. And they got rid of a lot of that parking, you put it down on the street and allowed for the plaza, it allowed for the skateboard park. It allowed for the city park to be completely redone. So people don't have no idea, they say parking was limited, we said, well, there's a thousand stalls. Well, there's nobody else to park, there's a thousand stalls, there, can you walk a few feet? And so what you do is you create a psychology by creating, by limiting the stalls and putting, activating the street. You get people to think, oh, there's something going on here, there's people sitting there, I see these outdoor heaters. They want to stop and slow down and go there and they'll hump your pack for a parking stall. Because they, they, they want to depark something, I've got pictures that'll blow you away. The other thing is, if, if you want to, I've done thirty-two tours of the Holiday Village area for cities, just like this. And if you guys wanted to go, I, in an hour, I could walk you around in a little small area and show you what we did with sidewalks, with lights, with hanging baskets, with buildings being pushed up to the street. And it might, it might help you think about how to take this downtown area because the village has got Holiday Boulevard and Forty-five Hundred South and Murray Holiday Road, which are super high-traffic areas. So I don't know, what is, does anybody know what our ADT is right here, right, right in this main area?
Fourteen thousand?
Oh, that's it?
On Main Street?
Yeah.
Isn't it about fourteen thousand, Josh?
Oh!
That's, that's my recollection, about fourteen thousand.
Okay, that's great because Murray Holiday Road, which is a little short road between the clock tower and the Holiday, and the mall, Cottonwood Mall, carries twenty-three thousand. And then Holiday Boulevard, I think, was in the neighborhood of eighteen thousand. So if we can do it at Holiday, you guys can do it here. But it involves a lot of, a lot of things, that's good to know. Anyway, I'm just saying, anybody who wants to go, two or three people, I'll take you, I'll drive you down. I'll show you City Hall and show you some fun things that we did. And so this doesn't seem kind of mysterious, just, you know, so I'm just throwing that out. If you, Melinda, if any planning commissioners want to go or a group, I've done it for groups of fifty or sixty people, so.
Paul?
Yeah?
If I went on your tour, I would find a former lumberyard area that was developed in high-density housing. And then immediately to the west, I'd find another development, developed by Mr. Romney's son with high-density housing. Those places support and give, uh, economic viability to the density of retail uses.
Yep.
Um, in a former life, I financed one of those projects that I just mentioned. So I appreciate Wilf bringing up parking. Because we've heard over and over again, don't you dare build an apartment building. But I want shops and I want walkability. So if, if that's, if that's the goal, we've got to have a, include paradigms that allow for my walk, I, I, I need to drive from my eight thousand square foot house in my suburban and, and have a walkable parking, uh, distance to these shops that we're envisioning. So absent, absent the densities and the pop, the walkable populations, you have to be very creative with parking.
Yeah, and just, just to support or to reflect what you're talking about, um, and I don't mean this to be a, you know, uh, what I did in a past life, but when I was in Salt Lake City, one of the complaints that we got from people in the Fifteenth and Fifteenth neighborhood and the Eleventh and Eleventh and others like that was that, um, they, they had the businesses there and people loved those businesses. People in the neighborhood just loved it, they loved being able to walk down and, and get a, you know, get a muffin for breakfast and do all of the various things, dinner. Um, the little shops that were there, they just loved those. Um, but so did a lot of other people and they were parking along the streets. And the people in those neighborhoods were complaining to the city bitterly, saying, you know, we just don't want those people parking on our streets. They're parking on our streets all the time. And our response to them was, well, do you like the shops? And they go, oh, yeah, we love the shops, it's one of the reasons why we live there, we really like that. Said, you aren't enough to support economically those shops. It takes people from elsewhere and they got to park. They've got to park somewhere. And so it kind of becomes a trade-off. Um, so there's that. And I just wanted to make a comment about the Mont Hall thing as well. Um, you know, twenty-two acres, that's pretty substantial. That's a lot of potential property and it seems to me, and I know one of the shortages, one of the things that we face in Kaysville is that we have a deficit of commercial tax revenue and we're looking for ways to, to increase that. That property, I don't think it could all be commercial, it's probably too much for that and it would probably affect the businesses that are here on, on Main Street and so on. But it really seems like it would be a great place to develop some kind of a center. You know, a, a mixed-use center with some commercial and some residential and maybe even some office. It really seems like we'd have great potential to do that.
Like the village?
So, yeah, like a village. Those are the adjacent uses.
I like the, I like the village idea, the only thing that concerns, well, not concerns me, but it does concern me is that each year, when we're doing the budget, we're having to raise taxes. And that's just not going to change and with the foresight of the West Side Fire Station and just all of the expenses that it costs to run the city, we need something that's going to generate taxes. So I mean, I just, you know, AI knows everything, so I just chat GPT. What is, what brings in the most tax revenue and it's Walmart, Costco, Target, and then...
Mixed, mixed use actually, per square foot?
I'm talking right now, I don't think so.
Yeah, it does, it does. There are multiple, multiple.
Last chat GPT. But my, my, the other issue in our city is that we've had, we've had plenty of businesses that have tried to go in over here and have struggled to fail and left, you know, little restaurants.
Yeah.
The Hawaiian restaurant, they just, they just don't get visited enough, people don't come to them. You need location-driven businesses, places that people Google and then go to that destination because it's where it is. And so, you know, next on that list is car dealerships. High-dollar, high-dollar purchases, you know, I, I can tell you right now that the trailer, trailer dealership is a huge contributor to our tax revenue. And so I love the idea of a village as well, I wonder if there's a chance to do a hybrid. But I also think that doing something large, large box, something location type of business there is going to be what's going to save us from a tax revenue situation. This is my thoughts on that partially.
John, furniture is one of the very, very best ones because it's not huge, but it's very high-ticket.
Yeah.
And it's pretty quiet with the hours. But there are, there are, just to go back to the Walmart or the Costco, every community wants that, of course. Uh, Syracuse is getting one, which everybody's excited about over there. Uh, but I, there are multiple articles on the APA website, the National APA website and, and economic development websites that show that mixed-use development actually produces, it's more of a rainmaker than just pure retail. Uh, and, uh, uh, don't, don't...
I just, I just doubt it there, that's the only thing. Like I see what you're talking about, that you would have immediate customers that lived above or around whatever you were putting there. But I, you know, where it's right against the freeway and everything, it, it, like, I know that the village that you're referencing, um, I know Gardener Village has, and I'd be interested to see what the type of revenue they bring in, because it's, it's trinkety type, uh, you know, hot, uh, what would you say?
It's furniture stores, it's tom goods, it's fabric stores, it's clothing stores, it's bookstores, kit stores.
I, I don't know that people are going into Gardener Village and spending thousands of dollars.
They are in the furniture.
Maybe on the furniture, but that's also high-end furniture in a location that's sort of known for selling maybe high-end. I, I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm not a visionary on this parcel, but I have a hard time seeing us being able to recruit the Gardener Village style of people to come in to that parcel.
I'll, I'll send it over, I'll send some articles over. But the real, the real key with, uh, economic development is, again, it's people, it's, it's feet.
It's rooftops.
It, it is, it's rooftops. And the other one is, um, that's really, really critical to understand about this is, um, the biggest danger is gentrification. Okay, so cities will go in and build downtown like Holiday did. And all the neighbors around saying, my property values are going to drop. The second that it was announced that we were going to redo the downtown, everybody's property values went off the chart. So the only bad thing about that is, is that it now becomes a destination and now it becomes cute. Now everybody, it's, now everybody wants to go there and then the property values go really high because it's a place where everybody wants to be. And that's what's happened in downtown Holiday. They built these gorgeous buildings that have rooftop amenities. Okay, they got rooftop terraces, so the people who live there have these incredible views. But they can't get any affordability. And so that's one of the drawbacks is that gentrification is that an old rundown area gets a little redevelopment, it gets a facelift and now everybody wants to go there and now it's not affordable. So you did the higher density hoping to get more affordability and the opposite happens. And Wilf, Wilf knows about that, it is, it is, it can be a drawback.
Um, one thing I think is a challenge with this little space here is the public input is not supporting what they said they're open to. We're open to this part of, you know, our Main Street being, you know, some options for housing or possibly some commercial. But then if we give them the option, ooh, 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 let's just do all single-family housing, you know? And I think part of it may be this point that you had brought up is maybe the communication of, is there a fear that we're bringing in just hordes of people that we can't support? Or are we just, you know, looking at a different format, the same, you know, housing numbers, but it gives us opportunities? You know, if we could just space it a little bit differently and have some options for housing. I mean, I really think this is your place to do something that's different.
Yeah, it's cool, I just think if Mike were here, which he isn't, so maybe I shouldn't speak for him, but he would say you should never, never, never give up.
Commercial.
Commercial, when you have the opportunity to do commercial. And, and, and I think that, like, the amount of boots on the ground that you would get from doing mixed use in this place would not outweigh the amount of space that all commercial would garner in tax revenue. It's just my hypothesis, but I could be wrong.
I, I think, um, when we look at big box type stores, Kaysville would lose their minds. If we said we are going to go try to get Walmart to come here, we would lose it. Because we've decided a long time ago what we are and how we are and what we like about things. Um, that doesn't mean that we can't change and adapt a little bit, but I think that would totally change the, uh, the whole makeup of the city, although I would love the tax revenue.
Tesla dealership.
I, I, I would love it. But, but I really think in Kaysville, when, in talking to people, you know, during the campaign, we did a lot of talking to people. A Gardener Village type scenario would really work, it would, it would, it would be complimentary to our city, it would be a destination type location. I know that this family does not appreciate us talking about their property.
Oh.
You know, and I don't blame them, it's their property. It is absolutely none of our business to decide what we want there. However, as a city, it's our responsibility to, to future plan, and so that's all we're doing. We are just identifying potential future plans for properties. Um, not telling them what to do with their property and they might never do anything. And that's totally their business and their, and their choice. But as we look at everything going on around it, I think that we just need to remember Kaysville is not going to be a high-end retail commercial hub. We have great businesses here and we actually have a pretty decent tax base here. Um, with warehousing and the different businesses in our business park. And I think that they don't get a lot of, um, visibility necessarily, they're just quiet businesses doing their work. But I think what we do need to do in Kaysville is just make sure that what we have, we do the best we can with what we have without changing who we are, and that's the biggest fear. I think people just, you know, we like the idea of, yeah, we want our kids to live here. We don't love the idea that they're going to live in a three-story apartment building across the street from us, we don't like that. So it's kind of hard because we talk, and I'm sure it's hard as, as planning commissioner. Because you look at the general plan, you hear, you hear that the state's going to come down on us and we're going to be reprimanded and punished. And as a council, we also hear those things, but yet we're also listening to the residents saying, okay, this is our community, what do we want? And we represent the residents and you have a different role as planning commissioner. So I'm sorry if it's incredibly frustrating for you to make decisions, recommendations and then have us say, no, we're not doing that. It's got to be frustrating. When I was on the planning commission, I remember it was a little bit like, wait, are we not on the same, same page? Are we not in the same city? Not our job to tell you how to, to plan because you're independent. But I, I do hope that we all, as we've gone through this, realize what we are hearing from our residents. As, as a city, of course, we do have, you know, the state makes their laws and their rules, we get that. But it's also a responsibility of a city and leadership in the city, I think, to push back where we need to. And to say, you know what, I realize that that's, you want housing everywhere, state, we get that. But we're mostly built out and we will never be a high-density city because we are just not set up that way. Even if we used every parcel of land and put high-density on it, we still wouldn't be a high-density city. So I think where it's appropriate, we've made good decisions and we've had some higher density than we're used to, the half-acre type, uh, product. But I think that we also need to really respect the fact that a lot of work has gone into this. We are hearing loud and clear what our community wants. And I think that it's okay for us to be brave enough to be true to what our community is telling us they want. Knowing that, sure, as, as planners, as overall, being responsible for the overall benefit of the city, it's our responsibility to think ahead and to plan for the future. And that's hard to tell people, to say, you know what, we understand what you want now, but what about thirty years from now? What is it going to look like? And I think that that's our biggest role. So this has been a great opportunity to get together, I really appreciate the time that we've been able to spend. I appreciate you guys taking the time to get a lot of feedback from our public. It's really, it's really contradictory sometimes. Because, yeah, we know, as, as, we know it would be good, it'd be great to have a Trader Joe's, I would absolutely love to have a Trader Joe's. Not everybody was thrilled, believe it or not, when I thought that that was a good idea. Because I'd heard from a lot of people, but not everybody wants that. So obviously, we're not going to please everyone, but we can do what we can do to advocate. And I do think that, um, the results of this, at least you're telling us, that we do like the idea of single-family detached. I think we're okay with smaller lot sizes, I think we need to be. We need to realize that smaller lot sizes hopefully will result in lower-priced homes. But I don't think that we need to completely change the makeup of Kaysville in order to respond to, you know, louder voices telling us that we need to be different because we are who we are. And I think that's okay to own it, you know, and, and I am very worried about our tax base, I get it. I, I hate the idea of increasing taxes, I think that people who own their homes should be able to actually own their homes. So I hope that someday we can make a state law change or a federal law change to not tax homes because that's not fair. People work their whole lives to have that as an asset and that security. And then the city and the government and the school districts and the county and everybody else adds taxes to them and then they're no longer homeowners. So, I don't know, it's a hard decision, but I appreciate the time that we've been spending on this. And, um, my takeaway from this is that, yeah, we do need to be a little bit more flexible perhaps and we need to be better at communicating why we want to be flexible. And I think that that's something that we could really work on as a city, to be able to communicate why this is a good idea. The CRA situation is so confusing. And, and doing the small-area plan right after was very confusing and I, and I understand the timing of that was kind of rough because we went from saying, okay, we're going to include all these homes in the CRA, we're going to get some tax increment. And then they said, okay, wait, you don't want that, you don't want your home included, okay, fine, we'll scrap it. But here's our small-area plan, which seemed a lot like the CRA, so I understand confusion, we need to be better as a city. But here's our small area plan, which seemed a lot like the CRA. So I understand confusion. We need to be better as a city communicating. We need all of your help to be advocates in communicating that. And also, I don't think that I think we're all on the same page. We all want the same things. I just think that we need to um what do we do, Jason? Just communicate better and a little bit more clearly in terms of where we're going? I think we do need to update our general plan. It's been a couple of years. The last time we updated it, it took four years, didn't it, Wolf?
Yeah, but COVID intervened, that was part of it.
That's true. That's true. It shouldn't it shouldn't take four years. But I think we should take this information that we're getting. We should add some updates. So that would be my plug for that.
I like that. Say that, Smashe.
I'm I got it off my chest. Go ahead.
Sounds good.
Okay, and I do just want to say, just next up for this one, so Wolf gave a website with me and Wolf with a minute on there, and I bet you'll listen to it. That would be great. Um so we're going to move forward with my definition of the scenario and we'll drop this to our everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Um so quick, I'm very glad to be here too.
So we're moving, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Um we're moving to item number six on the agenda.
Well, actually, I don't know the number, but we're yes, yeah, we're moving to another reason.
Has renumbered, yes. Yes.
Yes. And it's kind of curious because this is a part of sun, it's not going to be considered.
And I see presentation and discussion. Are we asking the planning commission to act on what was laid out in our packet this evening?
No, it's just a discussion. There is not any motion.
Thank you so much.
So just to get you all to understand what this is, so this is the Caseville City water preservation element of the general plan. So basically, the background of this project, the this isn't just Caseville, it's a statewide mandate that communities need to update their general plans to improve rate of water. And portion of their general plan, if they want or if not. And so that's to to go along with Sunrise Engineering, well, ten, and then fireways in the city water, firework, creative waters, and service district. And just for requirements and just as background, so this is in alignment with the top code and it actually was ten, that means one, definitely, it's actually plenty as those are recent legislative changes. Um that's one ten and that's the six. And just to say, must have a water element as part of the general plan, all the communities, waters, and pre ties, places of water scarcity. And it just seems like it's very much so the state has come in and said, people, let's look at this and see what uh what they're doing to allocate this less water usage. So analyze how to level and fix water demand infrastructure, identify strategies to reduce per capita water use, and system development. Recommend changes to government operations to public, consult with all the water providers, water resources, uh the DAB and irrigation companies, and plan this twenty year strategy every five years. And I just bring up this image because we were talking about this, we're going to address this project because um water is it's just been an issue, especially because of COVID, all of this new development, all the different people, wires just aren't running really late. And it's being used more and more and more. And it's a pretty stark reminder that that even on eleven nineteen eighty five versus that, just twenty twenty two. And are you feeling yourself? Yes.
Yes.
Oh.
Hello, hello. Thank you. So um and it's just a reminder that yes, this is something Caseville has to worry about, but cities and the state, everyone's taking a look at this and updating their general plans. So who's on this team? GSBS Consulting, we're managing the project and we're kind of doing the bit of engagement for the stakeholders involved. Public hearing presentations and assistance in the general plan update. Sunrise Engineering is contracted with the city and they're taking a look at the technical aspects of the water. What's being used, what it looks like for the future. And then we're working with Caseville City team members, John Trichier, Melinda and Anne. And Weaver Basin Water Conservancy District as well as state agencies, and they're helping to give us feedback on what currently exists and what's going on in Caseville. Um and what's planned for the future for conservation. So we're doing existing plans review, research, again, those conversations and then working with you to get feedback. And then we'll come back with a general plan chapter, basically an element, a portion of it that will address this need. So what we've been doing, we've been learning, we've been having conversations, and we've been doing existing documents review. So what's required by code, what's going on in Caseville. There is a twenty twenty five conservation plan update that's occurred, which Josh can speak to too. But um we've just been looking at what exists and what is going on versus the numbers of what it looks like for the future. And so we'll be putting together this draft and coming back in December for you to take a look at. So just measure of success for this, aligning state requirements, um public hearing clarity, and then stakeholder discussions. We basically talk to who we need to and then put in place a general, an implementable general plan update. So something that, things that we've been reviewing, so the obvious, you can see, this is from the general plan, the future land use map, land use differences make a difference in water usage. So one type is not the same as the other homes versus agriculture versus industrial. They're different and that needs to be considered for water usage. So how much water is accessible now for the future, i.e. water rights, allocation utilization, uh goals and objectives and strategies to align Caseville with Weaver Basin and secondary water systems in Caseville as well as future land use concerns. And who we've been talking to. So we have a team of city folks. We have Josh, City Engineer, we have Dexter, um Parks and Rec uh is involved in this as well and Community Development and GSBS. And we're also getting um input from Sunrise, like I said, the consulting engineer for um Weaver Basin Water Conservancy District and your three secondary water providers. So Weaver Basin, or sorry, Davis and Weaver Counties Canal Company, Benchland Water District, Hates Creek, as well as the different departments of the state, getting their feedback in the process. So when we very first started this conversation, um there was the concept of, okay, well, what is water usage like in Caseville? And currently, it's at about twenty percent is culinary and that is controlled by Weaver Basin and that's managed by uh the city. And the city has adopted an updated water conservation plan as of twenty twenty five, which I'm sure you're all aware, um with methods to help lessen water usage. A big point of this conversation, too, for water usage though, is that big number, that eighty percent of water is secondary and supplied by third party providers who have received that usage. And a tricky thing with that, in order to help us actually quote unquote plan for something like this, is that those secondary providers, their their data is pretty minimal. And they have, they don't have many, some of them don't necessarily have a lot of meters in place, so it's hard to get accurate information to go off of. So I just wanted to bring up, because a lot of work has been done for that twenty twenty five conservation plan update, so I wanted to give some kudos there. But um the tactics include establishing a reduction goal of ten percent of water usage with a target gallons per cap of the day of sixty. And focusing on just in general, annual evaluation rates, aggressive infrastructure replacement and minimizing leaks. Um annual education and outreach, targeted meter monitoring and property level outreach, turf replacement and landscaping agreements for new developments and expanding culinary irrigation at Parks and Schools to reduce flushing losses. And then this just kind of goes a little bit into the specifics. So city codes have been updated, irrigation is prohibited between ten and six P M. Um the public work director and power for drought restrictions, water efficient landscaping standards, enabled rebates and footers strip. And there's just a number of of different practices that the city will be enacting for water conservation, which is great. And that's really, and that's helpful. So just as we move forward on this conversation, because we've done a little bit of work and we wanted to show you that. So there's a lot of acronyms that come forward. And we have ERCs, which is equivalent residential connection. And that's just a standardized unit used by water utilities to represent the average annual water demand of one typical single family household. So when we see ERC, that's one household. Um acre feet per year, a unit of volume commonly used in water resource management to measure large scale water supply and demand, supply and demand per year. And then the gallons per year, measure of water consumption expressed in gallons per year. So in working with Sunrise, we basically said, where are we at currently? Where is Caseville right now? We just need to understand what it looks like now into twenty forty and into twenty sixty. And so right now, the gallons per year average annual demand is seventy four thousand seven hundred and twenty eight. And so what that means is that that is just usage right across the board, doesn't necessarily take into account um conservation assets. Um but basically, the growth of Caseville, it's, as you can see right here, um right now, we're in the green. But going into twenty forty and twenty sixty for that surplus versus deficiency, it's going to become, there's going to be a higher demand for water. And if it continues as is, there is going to be a shortage of water. So basically, from this calculation, without new sources, Caseville will face a five hundred and sixty foot acre foot per year deficiency by twenty sixty. So again, this is assuming current usage just remain the same. Um and so, and I did note this, Josh, thank you for sending this, and please correct me if any of this is wrong. The twenty twenty five plan, there is confidence that that will be sufficient to get Caseville to a good place. And there's a number of methods to do that. So there are the conservation tactics like we've talked about. But also, the a portion of that five hundred and sixty six number up there for twenty sixty, four hundred acre feet per year will come from Weaver Basin, crediting Caseville's usage volume for gallons of spring water diverted to them. And the city is also currently pursuing water rights for future wells use. So and just to come back to that other conversation, those numbers are for culinary. That was indoor water usage and it's that small percentage. Um the considerations for secondary water requirements, they're a little bit different, especially because this is kind of a new thing that some of these entities actually need to start metering. So the state has put together, they've mandated essentially the pressurized secondary water connections be metered. And there is a new code that all users of pressurized secondary water must have meters installed by January first of twenty thirty. Which makes this a little bit tricky because in essence, we want to say, okay, eight percent, that's a lot of water. What does Caseville need to do? But currently, there's not super great data to say, well, this is how much is actually used. This is how much every household, it or you know, it's just, it's tricky. They don't have those meters in place yet to get that really accurate data. So again, just like I said, it's, we asked Sunrise to actually do a a demand calculation, a little bit different, again, not super accurate. But it also does show, as you can see in the total, current demand is at ten thousand acre feet per year, ten thousand five about. By twenty sixty, it will increase. And so again, just something to be thinking about and considering. Um providers are working to implement those metering systems, but it's going to take some time. So um at this point in the process, we are working with Sunrise on potentially seeing about capacity numbers and if it's even possible to quantify, to kind of have anything to go off of for that. So just some questions and just things we've been thinking about. So how much conservation is required for Caseville to stay within its current water allotment? And to what degree will the city need to pursue additional water resources? That's answered for culinary, um but unknown for secondary. And so I I guess I just want to bring that up because it's, at this point, to get something through for the general plan, um we've just been thinking about, okay, we have good numbers for culinary, we have a good, that can, we can take information like that from the conservation plan and update the general plan element. But at this point, without knowing much about secondary, it's valid to also say, well, okay, maybe we're covered in culinary, at least there's a path, we can at least take a look at that. But moving forward, the city might have to re- relook at what secondary impact is going to have. So um at this point, I know it's kind of a lot of technical info. Again, Josh, please correct me if anything is wrong. But for this process, we essentially are going, okay, secondary seems okay. And we're confirming that. And if we can take those elements and make a general plan update for that, um excuse me, I think I said secondary, culinary seems okay. We can put something together for you to review in December and you can say, yeah, that looks good for the general plan. Um but otherwise, do you have, besides us coming back and bringing forward something that you can take a look at and feel comfortable with and adjust as needed? Are there any questions about this?
No, not for me. Seems pretty liquid.
Josh, I just, one question quickly. Um I've now forget the acronym. Was it the ECB, seventy four thousand gallons? Is that what that was called, ECB or the seventy four thousand?
Seventy four thousand, I think is a gallons.
ERC, yeah. The annual average demand on gallons per year. Where does that come from?
Uh so uh what we're doing here is we take the amount of water that we are currently purchasing from Weaver Basin each year uh and then comparing that with uh what we are calculating with the state, the equivalent residential connections is you know, we have about ninety four hundred metered connections in Caseville, that's homes, businesses, institutions like churches and schools. Um one home is one equivalent residential connection, so just a way to quantify the impact and the usage uh of of a connection. Uh a business is obviously going to have more usage and more impact on the system. And so there'll be more than one uh ERC for that one connection. So a business could be uh you know, four to eight to ten ERCs because it would use enough water that we're ten homes worth of water and and ten homes worth of impact on the system. So.
So the figure that you're using there for the residential, that comes from the state?
Uh yeah, so yeah, we report that to the state and the state works with us to establish what our ERC calculation is.
Oh, okay. So they, all right.
So you can see here, currently, our ERC is ten thousand eight hundred and thirty nine. And we we anticipate that obviously to grow as the city grows. Okay. To fourteen thousand, just fourteen thousand.
Other reason I ask is that I um in some of the past discussions that I've been in, um it was pretty well determined that the state was requiring a certain amount of water to be estimated for per residential connection. And there was, there was a substantial amount of information out there that seemed to indicate that that was a way overestimate. But I, you know, I don't know if they've modified that since, or it sounds like you're working with.
They they haven't modified it since. It's called the the minimum source sizing requirement.
Yeah.
Uh and a lot of cities are, and other water providers are are seeing similar uh to what you're saying is that according to some of what the state is saying, we don't have enough source currently. But the fact that we're continuing to operate efficiently and meet the demands, we we would disagree with that.
Yeah, right. Okay. Just to curiosity, is Weaver Basin water? Is that a single source for secondary and culinary? So Hates Creek or other districts are not in these numbers?
Uh yes, we don't have Hates Creek involved in these numbers. However, uh Hates Creek, Davis and Weaver Canal Company and Benchland Irrigation, they all receive a vast majority, if not all, of their water from Weaver Basin as well. We we're getting a hundred percent of Caseville's drinking water from Weaver Basin. Um but uh Davis and Weaver, uh they have water rights from springs and and creeks that they augment their system with. Uh Hates Creek, similar, augments their system with Bear Creek water and Benchland with Farmington Canyon. Um so their their majority is supplied by Weaver Basin, but certainly augmented a decent amount by natural water.
Uh one concern that I have is that um when we're doing planning, general plan, zoning stuff, you often hear people come out and oppose multiple family housing because they say they're going to use so much more water. And I think it's important that if we can, in this study, somehow get an equivalency on how much a town home, apartment, condo uses versus a single family. Because that, I think that is a very, very dangerous argument to use to say, well, we just don't have the water. We don't have the water for a hundred condos. Well, I want to know what, I want to know what that is. And I, it's really hard to get anybody pinned down on this because I think that's a very, very dangerous argument. And I think we need facts so that that cannot be continued to be used here in Caseville or elsewhere. For where, for where, I'm concerned about the whole damn Wasatch Front, not just Caseville. My kid, I got kids that live all over on Wasatch Front. It's 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 a bad, it's a bad thing to use to say, we can't provide for more people because my Kentucky bluegrass lawn and my home are going to use a lot less water than those four duplexes. So I think we need to see what usage is, if there's anybody that has that out there.
The information that I gleaned from the class at the uh conference there and the Great Salt Lake was that it's really, it's a non-issue as far as what's going internally in homes. It's what's being evaporated in the lawns and 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 especially agriculturally. So it really.
Keep arguing for half acre lawns.
It really is an issue as far as. The number of people and what, you know, how many gallons you're using in your home because all of that's treated and then goes out to the lake.
Yeah.
So.
I think you, hopefully, everybody sees what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
I I have a half acre.
It's ironic, yeah.
Yeah, I've got trees and lawn, a big lawn, and I feel guilty turning the water on. Whenever I turn my water on, which is as few times as possible, I realize, well, how many homes, how many smaller homes, smaller lots, garden patio lots, my kids live in in town homes in daybreak, they use a fraction of the water I do. they use a fraction of the water I do. So I just, you know, I think it's a, I think it's a bad argument against pop, you know, the population that's coming. They're coming whether we want them or not. Thing is, are we going to, are we going to make water for them or not?
Making data-driven decisions, as she, uh, pointed out, uh, over eighty percent of water used on the Wasatch Front in Kaysville will fall into that category is used outside irrigating. So as you compare, eighty percent of your water is being used outside and, and in development with larger yards. And, and I don't think you can blanket, say, one way or the other. Like, hey, you know, higher density is always going to use less water than lower density. Uh, it, it's all about the, the data. It's all about the story. It's all about, um, looking at things case by case. But that, that eighty percent is important to keep in mind. Where, uh, you know, certainly, there's a lot of water used indoors. Uh, but, you know, I've lived in Kaysville my entire life. I still live here. And it is surprising as you drive around during and after rainstorms and you see sprinklers all over the place.
Or schools with geysers.
Schools.
With geysers, just...
Broken sprinklers.
City halls.
There, there's a, there's a large number of, uh, or a high volume of water that is unnecessarily used. Um, you know, after the, the big rainstorms in October, uh, the last two and a half weeks that the irrigation systems were on, I didn't, I didn't water my lawn at all. And it looked great.
Turned off.
But I, I think, you know, in talking to, uh, other people that I know, they were frank. They're like, man, we got to get every drop out that we can and put on the lawn to get through the winter.
Yep.
And I think people would be surprised, uh, how, how resilient things can be if we, if we back off on watering. But it does get hard where the city is not the irrigation provider. But we still have a vested interest in people utilizing less in water making into the Great Salt Lake and more water being available for future developments. And to do education and outreach, uh, to help people understand what they really need to do.
Well, I think it's going to be interesting to see how. I've noticed a, a rise, a quick rise in the number of landscaping companies that are now specializing in ripping out your saw.
Rip the strip, yeah.
Ripping the strip, but they're also doing yards. I mean, I got Guatemalans that want to come up and chat with me in Spanish about, hey, man, you've got all this lawn. You should take a lot of it out. And we can do it cheap. You know, I mean, I, I, I think it's coming. There's going to have to be a day when we look at water and go, we have to go more like St. George in Las Vegas. New development's going to have to change. Can't just keep planting Kentucky bluegrass. Can't. I guess we can. It's suicidal.
But that fake grass is so hot.
You talk about the turtle, artificial turtle.
Yeah. Well, it's artificial grass. Like the artificial gra, it looks like grass, but it's artificial. Oh, my gosh, you walk out, you burn your teeth.
Oh, they, they ban that in some places because it's actually much hotter.
Yeah.
And it's worse for the environment. It gives off petrochemicals.
Yeah.
Plastic.
Yeah, artificial turtle.
Fake grass, no, thank you.
You know, I've got a family in Vegas and they're, they've got a small patch of grass around their pool. And then the rest is all cobbles, rabbits.
Just want asphalt for kids to play football on asphalt. Right? Come out there, have fun.
Well, I think we're adding us, more people than the city of Leighton every year. Leighton's a pretty big city.